Good evening and welcome to the May 23 meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join us for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their power, law, and justice. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, please call the rule.
Caputa.
Here.
Shilrock.
Here.
Tagana.
Here.
Schmidt. Sam. Lee. Jones.
Here.
All right, well, tonight we have a special presentation, and that would be from the Men of Harmony, so are going to have a performance. Could everyone stand for the National Anthem, please?
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the peril thus fighte'd O'er the ramparts' beards Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red light Which ever rocket's in the air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? When the storm clouds gather Far across the sea Let us swear allegiance to a land as free Let us all be grateful For a land so fair As we raise our voices In a solemn prayer God bless America, land that I love Stand beside her and guide her Through the night with the light from above From the mountains to the prairies To the oceans wide before God bless America, my home sweet home God bless America, my home sweet home, my home, my home God bless America, land that I love Stand beside her and guide her Through the night with the light from above From the mountains to the prairies To the oceans wide before God bless America, my home sweet home God bless America, my home sweet home, my home, my home.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joe. You know, there was talk, and I'm not going to say which administration the talk occurred in, but there was talk of putting, we had to renovate this ceiling at one point in time. There was talk of putting a drop ceiling in here, and I'm so grateful for a moment like this that we kept the acoustics of this room. You guys were beautiful.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
And just wanted to give you a certificate of recognition, great, grateful that you guys came tonight and shared your beautiful experiences. Take us now and be a beautiful city, but the sounds are good. Thanks very much.
We're always looking for new members.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes and executive meeting minutes of the May 19, 2016 meeting? Hearing none, Councilman Jones moves to approve the minutes. That's seconded in by Mr. Hanky. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda will be a special presentation from Tim Green, giving his legislative report. Welcome. Would you, when you do that, we're having trouble lately with the microphone. If you can get that as close as you can.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Can you turn on the screens?
Oh.
I'm going to give you a presentation. The Missouri General Assembly adjourned Friday, May 3. It was a very busy year. Just to give you an idea, it was a record year for House bills introduced in the history of the state of Missouri. There were 1,471 House bills introduced, 54 concurrent resolutions, and 68 House joint resolutions. Several bills I'll just touch upon because they were brought to my attention, and I followed them, dealing with changes to the limits of annual general operating revenue from traffic fines up to the 20 percent. There is a bill that we will discuss a little later that did not go anywhere. Several other bills that were introduced that I briefed you on throughout the session was House Bill 1455, creating a neighborhood watch fund. House Bill 1495 would require new council members to receive training, and basically you can see they just received hearings. House Bill 1723 by Representative Weeman in St. Charles prohibits state and subdivisions from requiring the owner of property, it abuts, or easement to maintain or pay for the maintenance. Those were just some bills. As you always hear on my reports that are introduced, and you might get questions, where are those bills? When there's 1,400 bills introduced, a lot of bills sometimes don't even get hearings. So this is just basically going through some of them that you had brought to my attention or I was watching. I list this bill for you, House Bill 1684, because when you're watching that legislation, there was some legislation that had some detrimental effect or was trying to change some ordinances the city of Florissant had. So all those bills and this bill I listed had nothing to do with you at the time, but there was an amendment at one point in the last two weeks that dealt with House Bill 1811 that I received several inquiries on throughout. So you might hear there's an amendment being put on, so that's why I listed that bill. That was your breed prohibit bill that continually tries to get attached. House Bill 1434, which was a bill that does have an impact for municipalities in St. Louis County, Jefferson County, St. Charles County, and the city of St. Louis, basically dealing with some changes in the tax increment financing law. And basically, back in 2009, we created a region TIF commission. So St. Louis County has a TIF commission. If that TIF commission disapproved a TIF a municipality was proposing, with two-thirds of the municipal vote, you could override that TIF commission's recommendation. Basically, all this bill does is if the TIF commission denies that proposal and the municipal government overrules that proposal, they can only use that tax increment financing dollars for demolition of the building and grading of the property. It's trying to bring some type of controls with the TIF abuse that has occurred in the metropolitan region. That was also handled by your Senator, Senator Walsh, in the Missouri Senate. This was just another bill that was placed on the end, but the reason I had this bill listed was this was one that was dealing with the sales tax redistribution for a while and the breed prohibit legislation. So that's why I listed it. That was placed on the informal calendar, the second last day of session. House Bill 1811, which I did receive, which I've been telling you there were a lot of attempts. Basically, it did pass the Missouri House, and it was assigned to committee with two, three weeks left in session. That committee chose not to have the hearing, so the last three weeks of session, it was basically a job making sure when that bill was added on as an amendment in the House that we were able to stop it in the Missouri Senate. So that bill did not pass, nor did any types of legislation, as amendments pass on that piece of legislation. Just so you know, when you're following legislation, there's 76 standing committees, 14 select standing committees, and 17 statutory committees. So there are a lot of committees going on during the four, four-and-a-half-month process. The status of the bills, out of those 1,400 bills that were introduced, 613 bills were reported do pass out of committee. So I'm trying to show you that even though 1,400 is introduced, only 600 come out of committee, which is a record, too. 324 of those were placed on the calendar, 265 passed out of the desk, and 113 is the actual number of House bills that made it through both chambers on the governor's desk out of 1,400. But some of those bills do have multi-bills added to them, but it's just trying to show you the amount of bills that are being introduced just for people to introduce bills. Senate bills, there were 583 Senate bills, another record by the Missouri General Assembly. It's the most Senate bills that have been introduced in one session. One of the bills that I followed for you that did not have no action, but it did receive a hearing, was specifies that the state of Missouri is not liable and shall not pay debts financially insolvent municipalities. I'm sorry. That bill did get placed on another piece of legislation that did pass. This was basically a piece of legislation that dealt with political subdivisions doing design-build projects. The reason I listed that at one time, that had the sales tax distribution issue on it as well. House Bill 572, this modifies the provisions of municipal courts. This was an issue we went along that had some issues about how municipalities enforce codes. It lowered the penalty fee to max out at $225. And it changes minimum standards for municipalities in St. Louis County. You will basically have to report what your requirements are by the year 2018, but it did not change that too much. Basically, the one issue it dealt with most is lowering the fines. It also requires municipal governments to let the property owner, not just the resident or occupant, knowing of the problems you're having with high grass or things with the house. It also prohibits a municipal judge from, prohibits a municipal judge from serving on more than five municipal courts. Senate Bill 623, you have all had interest in the motor fuel tax, in the need for motor fuel taxes to generate revenues for construction. It did pass the House, or I mean, it did pass the Senate. It went to House Committee, it did pass out of House Committee, but it received no action on the House floor. So once again, that issue with highway funding has been put off to another year. Senate Bill 765, that passed on May 13. It basically modified some provisions relating to law enforcement, public records, and it prohibited political subdivisions from having a policy requiring or encouraging traffic citations on a quota basis. House Bill 1561, this is your pool tax issue, and basically, as of the year 2014, your revenues from the pool tax will not go down, but you will not receive as much from the pool tax pool. It will be split up at 50 percent, and the other 50 percent stays in the municipality. This is the issue that we have fought off the last three years. The city of Chesterfield has pushed, the city of Florissant. Even though it was one of those issues, it's less harmful, because when the bill was introduced four or five years ago, it had a financial impact negative to Florissant of over $700,000. This does not have a negative impact. It's just your growth from revenues from the pool will not grow as quick as they did. But the city of Florissant was on record against this piece of legislation, even though it passed. And I have contacted the governor's office for the city of Florissant and urged you as the council to write the governor, too, against this piece of legislation. The one thing that was not added that states it on here is there was no county law enforcement, sales tax proposal on this piece of legislation. Senate Bill 800, this is a bill that was defeated in the House during third reading, and it was basically an issue that was added to it that was defeated that I'll talk about in Senate Bill 1,003 and Senate Bill 1,004 when it comes up. And I'll explain why I put that slide there that doesn't have impact, but how they tried to add something to it that was detrimental. Senate Bill 861, this is the added sales tax issue that I just talked to you about, that there's two bills with the sales tax redistribution, new formula in it, House Bill 1561 and Senate Bill 867. Okay, Senate Bill 1,003, this would prohibit subdivisions from participating in any action in federal court that is either a representative or a member of a class to enforce or collect any tax. Basically, this was being pushed by charter communications this year that would, if a city went to sue charter for the collection of a tax, and it was happening to the city of Florissant, you could not join suit. That was, and the federal action was 1,003, and the state action, I believe it was 1,002. As you can see, all the municipal consultants that are hired by the different municipalities worked with the state muni league and the St. Louis County muni league, and we were able to defeat it 88 to 55, but it kept coming back up. And this is one of those bills that was added to that Senate Bill 800, that once it got snuck on, we had to work and kill it in the House. But this was basically an issue of taking the way of municipal governments to join with other municipal governments when they have an issue dealing with the collection of taxes. House Bill, or Senate Bill 1004 was the state action, and I just talked about. There are 18 standing committees, 19 statutory committees, so that gives you an idea of the amount of committees that you're following on a daily basis. The status of the Senate bills is 72 were, bills were put on the perfection, left on the perfection calendar, 125 were voted out of committee and passed through the Senate, and 40 bills were truly agreed and finally passed. Some dates you might want to follow is July 14 is the day the governor can veto a bill or sign a bill. August 28 is when a bill goes into effect, and September 14 is veto session. And there's a list of the different consultants that are hired by the different cities throughout the state, constantly dealing with all this legislation, and you can't keep 197 individuals educated on every issue, so it's kind of working as a team with all these individuals. I hope I wasn't too long, because I know you have a full agenda tonight. So, any questions?
Yep, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Jones got there late. Mr. Jones.
Tim, I just want to say thanks for coming up and giving us all this information. It rebuffs us, keeps us up to date what's going on up in Jeff City. I know we all try to do it as much as we can, but we have other jobs, and we're on the streets, as our council people expect us to be out there, so, but no, it's nice to be rebuffed like this and let us know what's going on up there in Jeff City. So thank you very much. You do a good job, Tim.
Thank you, and I know Councilman Lee's asked several times. The PowerPoint has been given to the mayor, so if you want that PowerPoint. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda, but for three minutes. We asked that you would fill out a yellow speaker card, and we don't have any, so nothing to worry about. Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. So we will move to public hearings. We have public hearing number 1604012, which was opened on April 26 and postponed until this date. We will now reopen that public hearing. Is Mr. Langford present? How are you? Oh, that needs to be on again.
Good evening. Once again, I'm Mark Doring, President of Doring Engineering, and the good-looking guy to my left is Steve Langford, and the Blues are winning 2 to 1 at the end of the first period.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
You may have to pull that mic closer or take it out and hold it closed, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Will do.
What? Oh, the projector? How'd it get off? Oh, there it is.
As you know, we are here in April, and we had just came from the Planning and Zoning Commission, which we worked out a lot of work on the elevations as well as the site plan. We had received a unanimous recommendation of approval from the planning commission. The last time we were here, we went over our site plan, and I think people were very comfortable with the site plan, the setbacks, et cetera, but the main discussion was more of the exterior materials of the building, okay? So we're here to address that. Steve will do that shortly. Since then, corporate, you all, corporate corporations always, sometimes don't work as quickly as we think they should. They, they've reviewed our site plan, and they have some safety concerns, and on this, on this slide right here. Lindbergh's on the top. Lindbergh's on the top here. They were concerned about the narrowness of the pavement in here with trucks pulling in and pulling out. So, so corporate asset, we request this evening to add additional 33 feet of pavement in that direction. We went from about 121 feet of green space, which is what we told you when we were here previously, down to 88 feet of green space. So there's still substantial green space there, much more than approximately 20 to 25 feet of green speed, green space that's there. So we're hoping that the city finds that safety issue in our, in concurrence with our findings there, and then if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to address that.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah. Mr. Hustle, is this deemed enough of a change that would, might have to go back to P&amp;Z?
Do you want me to take the easy approach?
I know, I'm just.
Say staff determination.
Staff determination.
I have the needed input from Bill Lumm, as well as from Gerald, make a determination. Obviously, I recognize that it's 30 feet differential.
Yes, sir. 33. If I may, I.
I have a couple labels, but I don't believe that it's required, but I believe that judgment is set.
Right. All right. Thanks.
If I may, I sent the plans over to Mr. Lumm last Thursday after I heard about it, and he didn't seem to have any concerns. He just said, remember, Mark, you got to still go with the entrances to MoDOT, so, that's what he told me through an email.
Okay.
Yes, my next question is, do we have a copy of that?
A copy of?
Do we have that site plan?
Yeah, we emailed him a PDF of the plan, and I brought 12 copies this evening for your, for your use.
Perfect. You want to pass them? You can give them to our city attorney. I think before the postpone, when we postponed, it was to see, did you bring the materials in by chance? I think that was a question that we had, and also.
the safety of, if a couple of large trucks are there at the same time, there's a particular radius we need to allow for turn, for safe turning.
Okay.
That's the only change to the site plan you already had.
Perfect, and I won't.
And then the questions that come up about specific building materials on the elevation, we went out and got this king span panel, and are you familiar with that? This is what we showed you the last time.
Uh huh.
And then there was a question. And then, there was a question, wanted to see it, wanted to see the, our concept rendering didn't show the exact same materials as what was called out, so this, this rendering now shows the brick in the north wall, which is, the front of the building is brick, and then three feet along the west elevation, and the remainder of the building is this king span panel. So, this matches what was agreed with the planning and zoning. The particular brick, this is called utility as far as size, it's larger than the standard brick. So, I have this for.
So, that's a regular masonry wall, it's not one of these panels that come out that looks masonry type, it's a full masonry design.
Mr. Hanky, did you have a question before that came in?
It's always. This is a brick. The bigger the brick, the heavier it goes.
I don't know, it didn't look like it's heavy enough for her.
Did you have a question, Mr. Hanky?
No, well, I'm just backing up just a little bit. The wide end of the drive for trucks going back and forth, 33 feet, it still leaves, what, did you say the green space is still 88 feet, do you think it is?
88 feet.
Okay, good, that's, so you're still considerable amount even with the, the drive difference. Okay. And this is just on lot.
Yeah, it shows up in your plan as that hatched area, I tried to highlight it.
Right, yeah, I see it on here. Thank you.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so you, I wasn't here at the last meeting when you were here for your first public hearing. I did watch it live on, through my computer. Did you say this building's going to be an actual tilt-up building?
Yes, it's a tilt-up building.
Concrete tilt-up building?
Concrete tilt-up building.
Plus, that and the bricks going to be on the facade, correct?
No, no, that would be like, we wouldn't, would not build two walls, the north wall is going to be all masonry, there's no concrete tilt-up there.
Concrete's masonry. Still masonry, concrete, it's masonry.
Okay. It's, it's all brick on the north, all brick, and on the west elevation, that's all brick to three foot.
Okay.
There's nothing dressing up the concrete.
So, your walls, your main walls are going to be tilt-up concrete, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You have anything else? Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment? Seeing none. Councilman Hanky moves to close this public hearing, that is seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor? Public hearing's closed.
Thank you.
We have public hearing number 1605016, is the petitioner.
In accordance with section 405, pre-tertiary zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council, Florissant, Missouri, and Council Chambers, 955 Route St. Francois, on Monday, May 23rd, 2016, at 7:30 PM, on the following proposition, to authorize a special use permit to FIT Kids Ministries, Inc., DBA FIT Kids Camp, to allow for an educational development center in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 2370 North Highway 67. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or TDD 8395142.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Hi. How are you?
I am Stephen Ray, President of FIT Kids Ministries, 2370 North Highway 67. Good to see you all tonight. So, yes, we are requesting a special use permit for our educational development center in the B3 zoning district, and we had been here through planning and zoning and got approval for that, and I just simply wanted to come tonight and, and share some important reasons for my request, if you don't mind. First of all, I'd like to show you some awesome, beautiful pictures of our wonderful kids, aren't they great? So, our goal is to really help as many people, as many children as possible reach their greatest potential, that's what we're doing, and have done so for several years. I believe you all have copies of this, but I'd like to, I don't know if you can see it sideways, huh? There we go. So, we have been, we have over 40 Florissant families at this point that are counting on our services, to provide a service for them, for their children's summer break here in Florissant, and their summer break actually starts this Thursday on the 26th, and so we've been really crunched for time. We help impact many children in so many ways, positive ways, over the years, teaching them life skills, education, character development, and different sporting activities. And we are concerned that if we're not approved to start on Thursday, that we would lose the opportunity to change many children's lives for the better because they'll be forced to put their children in a daycare or other type of camp that possibly does not offer the benefits that we offer. We actually have piles of testimonials of how we've helped so many families over the last 10 years. They've actually been here for several years, serving the families in Florissant. Number three, this location at 2370, the lower level, has already been previously approved for a special use permit for a daycare. I believe it was 2010, if I'm not mistaken, and our children are actually going to be from the ages five to 12 years old, so we won't have any infants or little tiny children in our program. I, I do understand that it's typical that the council does not typically approve three reads at one night, I get that, but I'm making a special request for important reasons. I actually have started this project in advance with the building owner, Judy Bomar, a lot of you may know, from Bomar Real Estate, and so we are trying to move forward and get this done earlier. However, she had an offer on the building and therefore put a stop to the lease that I was going to sign, and so it kind of put a crunch on everything. And then finally, the offer didn't go through, and she agreed to a lease, which was signed for, to start on May the 1st, so the 1st of this month, which only gave us a few weeks to really press on. The building commissioner gave us an approval for building, a construction permit, we were able to go ahead and, and start construction, and so we are planning to be done by this Thursday, having, having everything complete. So, basically, that's it, and thank you for hearing me out, and I hope you'd hear hearts and help all the children in, that we serve in Florissant by allowing three reads this evening for a special use permit. Any questions?
Mr. Sam?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Ray, on May 13th, I saw an article on kmov.com, it was stating that your business was in fact, it was about your business or appeared to be about your business, that it was in fact a childcare operation or a daycare operation, and that the news media went there and they were turned away, and you know, the article said all this stuff. Would you like to give your side of the story of that?
Absolutely.
Or clear the air about that?
Yeah, there's actually a gentleman, I don't mind saying his name because he made himself public, Craig Licklider, that actually accused us, he actually told us, he was actually, his daughter was a member of our martial arts school, I'm actually the owner of the FIT martial arts as well, and so we actually have a video testimonial of his wife giving great information about how we've changed his daughter's life, and I think there was a spiritual conflict through a question that we asked his wife, and so he left and took his daughter down the street to another martial arts school, and, and actually sent us a bad messages, handed out negative flyers to all of our parents in our lobby, hung them on car windows out in our parking lot, and sent me a message that says, "Master Ray, your business will be closed by the end of the year, and I'm going to make sure of it." So, he had a personal vendetta against me for some reason. But anyway, he, that was before we actually started our FIT Kids program, and so without having any information, he didn't know that we had a ministry, he actually thought that we are a, just a business, and didn't understand that we are not a daycare, that we had an after-school program, transported after-school program, which we actually have consultants through a program called MAST, and they actually won a, an award in the White House, and we follow exactly their system, and there's programs like this all over the country, and they are not a daycare, but just transported martial arts program. So, his, the prosecuting attorney spoke up in that, in that report, that news report, and so I was thankful for her, the news reporter's report with him or interview with him, because he stood up for us and said, "I don't see anything that they're doing wrong, this is an after-school program, not a daycare." So, any questions? And even if it was, we would be exempt under the laws as a ministry, so.
Yes, sir, how are you?
Yes, sir.
One question that I have here is, I'm reading in your, in your statement that we'd received, that you're starting the construction with the permission of the, of the building commissioner, so you can be ready on time.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming what you're saying is the building commissioner, your, your, your construction permits and plans were approved, but.
Yes, sir.
I'm curious, if you want to clarify, with permission of the building, did the building commissioner explain to you that you cannot open until you receive your?
Yes, sir. He said, "I would be taking a chance," you know, spending money and everything.
I just want to make sure he, he informed me that. So, your plans were approved and you were able to do your construction, but.
It was a step of, step out of faith.
I hope he didn't put any faith, I hope he didn't put any false hopes in your.
No, sir, it was totally my decision to, to step out in faith, because that's the only way we could make it happen, you know?
All right, and so if I understand this, you're going to be a summer program, but you're also going to be an after-school, so it's going to be a year-round program?
Yes, sir, it's kind of like.
Okay, and you want to just explain to me for the sake of educating me, it seems like a daycare center to me, and I'm just curious as to, I mean, I understand that you're going to be doing FIT Kids kind of things, but, I mean, I've looked at your plans, I've read your, I mean.
Yes, sir. It's like a vacation Bible school, we're a ministry, and so we help children grow spiritually, mentally, and physically to reach their greatest potential, that's our mission, and that's what we do. And I actually, I'm a bishop, I have 15 churches in India, and an orphan home there with 30 orphans, and so it's, it's just my ministry.
Okay.
Mr. Schmidt?
I guess from your plans, I'm assuming that you're going to have all the exercise will be inside the building?
We'll have indoor and outdoor sports.
Okay, well, I don't see any that reflected in the plans as far as the outside goes.
I mentioned that in the planning and zoning, actually, so I might have not, this is the outside parking lot here, I might have a better picture, actually. Let's see, it's kind of dark. There we go. So, anytime we do an outdoor activity, you know, whatever is, we're approved to do, of course, we wouldn't do anything that we're not approved to do, but we would block off the parking lot there, and we use that back parking lot, which nobody ever uses, there's no parking back there. And then we have the big, big field on the side, so that would be for the outdoor activities, and then, you know, most of our things are done indoors, and then we have, you know, field trips, we'll go to the park and that type of thing.
Okay, my question still stands. I, I see no reflection of that on the plans, no reflection of how you're going to block the roads off, how you're going to do that.
Yeah, I was never in.
I don't see that. I, I see where you say what you're going to do, but I don't see it in the plans.
Yes, sir, I've.
It's not reflected in the plans.
Yeah, nobody ever.
We're talking about kids, kid's safety.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see that in some plans and know what you're going to do, and how it's going to be handled.
And I would be willing to, you know, just do indoor activities for now until something like that would be approved, if it's not approved at this time.
Well, like I said, it's not, it's not in the ordinance as that way as, as right now, so that's why I'm questioning it, so.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hanky?
Yes, good evening. You said you have like, I don't have it right here, like farty families waiting or whatever it is.
Yes, sir.
How, is this a, a plan where you have a schedule, where you sign up for two weeks or four weeks or the entire summer, or is this weekly, can you come in one day? How does it work?
Yes, sir, we have actually three different, like, programs, they can actually do a full summer membership, which is 11 weeks for, in accordance with the Ferguson Florissant School District calendar.
Okay.
For summer break, and then they can also choose a week-by-week membership, so they can choose whatever weeks they want as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I'm going to follow up on Mr. Schmidt's questions.
Yes, sir.
How many parking spaces are you planning on blocking off, and how would you block them off? I'm, I'm concerned about children's safety if they're out there playing kickball or something in a parking lot, where you've got ingress and egress and cars driving, and are you going to put up some cones, are you going to put up fencing and bollards to keep somebody from getting in there, or?
Well, at this time, we have the, you know, the, the large cones that we can block off the pathway there, it's just a pretty narrow pathway for the cars to go back, but no, like I said, nobody ever parks back there.
Can you put up a, a map, because show me where you're planning on blocking off, or?
Yes, sir. If you can see this little grassy area.
Can't see it.
You can't see that?
I'm looking, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at this that was sent to us, that shows your parking spaces, do you have that that you could put up there and maybe show us where you're?
Actually, I don't have that one with.
I'll give it to you if you want to, but.
Yes, sir.
Put that up and show where you're.
So, here is the front parking, and the side parking, and then the rear parking. So, as you can see, there's a grassy area right here, and there's just a little driveway path to go back into the back area, which, like I said, nobody uses, but we block this area off here, is what the plan is, to do any, and it's just like 45, 45 minutes of outdoor activity. And then, also, you know, we can use the grassy area, there's a big field right next door, and we can use that in addition to the, depending on what kind of activity that we're doing.
I'm really uncomfortable with putting kids in an area that's not, we've not heard that before, and there's no indication, I mean, I'm worried about kid's safety if you put some rubber cones up and.
Sure. Well, I'm willing not to, you know, have the outdoor sporting activities, it's not necessary, we can do everything that we do indoors.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, could you explain your drop-off and pickup procedures and where that's actually going to be done?
Yes, sir. So, as you can, you can see right here past this grassy area, this is going to be our loading zone, and so we, we bring the vans, this is for field, I'm speaking of field trips, but the parents can do.
I'm talking about drop-off and pickup.
For the, the parents, yes, sir. So, right here, it's the same spot is where we would bring our vans, so there's a door, be much easier probably if I showed a picture of it, but there's a door right here for the entrance, and so this is the drop-off point, or they're welcome and encouraged to actually, because they can't actually drop off their kid unless we have a coach out there to receive them, which we will, but most likely, they will actually be required to park and bring their child in the facility, so they have to walk them into the building.
Now, is that side drive, is that a two-way drive?
This one here, sir?
Yes.
Yes, sir, right here, I feel honestly.
It's wide enough for two cars?
Yes, sir, here, but I honestly feel like this could be widened a little bit, this path to go in and out.
So, is somebody going to be out there monitoring that drive in the mornings and pickup times?
Yes. Uh, yes, if, if the parent wants to drop off the child.
So, we don't have speeding cars coming flying down there, and...
Yes, sir. Another, another option that we are considering is because I am also the president of Fit Martial Arts in the upper level, if it is, if there's no problems with it, we can actually have the children dropped off, they can park in this parking lot, and bring them right into the front door of the lobby, and then, we have coaches that can walk them around to the lower level. So, it's just an, an idea, but the plan is to actually have the parents to come around back, park in the parking lot, bring their children in.
Okay, again, I, I don't have anything else right now.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm being a pain in your tail here, but, so they're going to come in, they're going to drive down, and they're going to drive into the, what you're hoping to be the play area? So, if a parent's coming to pick a kid up, they're going to have to come down into the play area?
Uh, no, sir, because, well, the timing is important. We time everything, all of our activities are scheduled, and so, the drop-off time in the morning is between the hours of 7:30 in the morning and 9 o'clock. And we don't do any outdoor activities during that time. And the pickup time is between 3:00 and 6:00 o'clock, and so, we will not have any...
Okay, so, no, no parent, no parent could pick their kid up?
No, they can, but that's, they're, you know, they're not scheduled to do so. They tell us when they're going to pick them up.
You know, I, I know, I understand you were really in a rush to get this done, and...
Yes, sir.
And you got, but man, there's just a lot of questions that, I'm worried about kid's safety, and, you know, and...
Well, that's our number-one priority as well.
I'm, I'm sure.
All of our, all of our coaches are background-checked, drivers-checked, and we have security cameras, I mean, that's my biggest concern, of course, I, I care about the children, but I also don't want a lawsuit, you know? So, that's huge for us. So, any precautions that are recommended, we will take them, and we are doing everything that we can to ensure the safety of our children. Thank you, sir.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing no further comments, Mr. Sayam moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, guys.
We will now move to second readings. Bill number 9184, Mr. Sayam moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa, all in favor? Opposed?
An ordinance to issue an amendment to be five ordinance, number 6266, to allow for additions to the existing ground sign for the property located at 14070 New Hall's Ferry Road and 3180 North Highway 67.
Mr. Sayam moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky, all in favor? Opposed?
An ordinance to issue an amendment to be five ordinance, number 6266, to allow for additions to the existing ground sign for the property located at 14070 New Hall's Ferry Road and 3180 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please call the council for the final vote.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Bill number 9184 passes and becomes ordinance number 8224. Bill number 9185, Councilman Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing appropriation of $7,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account 062901 Building Maintenance and Supplies, to reimburse the golf course for MSD repairs to the creek.
Councilman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? I'm sorry, I didn't see you on there. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify to anybody that's, that's listening, that MSD did some work at the, at the golf course, it affected part of the, the, the grounds there, and so, they have rem, they have paid the city $7,000, and the city has already done the work out of our own golf course funds, so really, this is, it's coming out of the general fund, because that's where the, where the reimbursement went to, so it's really not any new funds. They actually did a very good job re-repairing it, but, and they got it ready before the big golf season, so that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Bill number 9185 passes and becomes ordinance number 8225. Bill number 9186, Councilman Sayam moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance amending chapter 600 of the Floriscent City Code relating to liquor licenses and licensees.
Before the final vote, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, clerk, please, please pull the council.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Bill number 9184 passes and becomes ordinance number 8226. Bill number 9187, Councilman Jones moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa, discuss, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance adopting a policy against sweatshop practices.
Councilman Jones moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Lee, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance adopting a policy against sweatshops practices.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment? Please state your name and address, Mr. O'Donnell, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Floriscent, Missouri, 63031, Ward 4. I was wondering, why are we even having this? Because it, don't we, isn't there a state and there a federal law against sweatshops already? And what kind of manufacturing do we have in Floriscent? That's my only question. Because it was a very vague reading, it had no explanation of what, what it was all about, unless, the people out here don't even know what they're, what it's about, unless they were, were to have the memo, you know? So, could you kind of give me a, a quick summary?
Mr. Jones, would you like to...
I'm just curious.
What'd you need, Kev? Can you repeat it for me?
Didn't you hear it the first time?
No, I didn't, Kev.
Okay, well, this goes to show you, but how important I am, my voice is here. I'm asking, don't we have a sweatshop law already in the state of Missouri, and in the United States of America, that we do not have children working in manufacturing in sweatshops? And my second question is, what kind of manufacturing do we have in Floriscent that requires this law for sweatshops? That's my question.
This is not about the manufacturing in the city of Floriscent, Kev, it's about the things that we purchase to make sure they're not coming out of sweatshops.
Okay, so, okay, that's, that's understandable, but how do we know that they're not?
Oh, we had to do a little due diligence and do our little homework on it, Kev, uh...
I was just wondering, well, who does, who does the...
Most, most of your things like that, Kev, a, a short break of it is when it's American-made, you can almost bet that it's not a sweatshop.
Well, it depends on if you're in New York or not, because there's still some in New York and in California, but, you know, I'm just, I was just curious of how it read, because I read it, and I read apparel and everything in there, and I, you know, I was just curious, you know, because it's such a short, short thing.
Are you against it, Kev?
Am I against what?
Are you against this?
I'm against sweatshops, yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm against a lot of things, and I think everybody knows that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kev.
Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Bill number 9187 passes and becomes ordinance number 8227. Bill number 9184, Councilman Caputa moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing appropriation of $12,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account 4015 Unemployment Claim Reserve for reimburs, for reimbursable unemployment benefits.
Councilman Caputa moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing an appropriation of $12,000 from the General Revenue Fund to account 4015 Unemployment Claim Reserve for reimbursable unemployment benefits.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Bill number 9188 passes and becomes ordinance number 8228. Bill number 9189, Councilman Sayam moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing appropriation of $35,000 from the Park Improvement Fund of the City of Floriscent to account 0950961470 Capital Additions for the purchase of the land at 575 St. Charles Street.
Mr. Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Egan, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing appropriation of $35,000 from the Park Improvement Fund of the City of Floriscent to account 0950961470 Capital Additions for the purchase of the land at 575 St. Charles Street.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment?
Good eve, good evening, my name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Floriscent, Missouri, 63031, Ward 4. My question is, here we go again, it's not a question, it's a statement. Authorizing $35,000 from the Park Improvement Fund to City of Floriscent to go to the Capital Additions account to purchase land at the corner of, uh, St. Charles Street and St. Francis, okay? Is that going to be a park? Are they going, is that going to be part of the park system now? Is that going to be the 23rd Park? Because as far as I can see, this is not a park improvement, and I think that this is, that this money shouldn't be taken from the park, from park improvement funds. We have too many things we need in the parks. We just removed a slide at the cost of $20,000 at the JFK Center. We're not replacing it, because we can't afford it, but we can afford to buy a patch of ground from the Parks Improvement Fund. I, I disagree with this. If you go ahead and do this, I think that you're vote, you're voting misappropriating funds to capital, uh, capital additions. And this is just the first one, I'll see you on the next one later, thank you.
Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Bill number 9189 passes and becomes ordinance number 8229. Bill number 9190, Councilman Shuldorff moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing appropriation of $25,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund of the City of Floriscent to account number 0350361480 Capital Additions for the purchase of the buildings at 575 St. Charles Street.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment?
Thank you, Madam President, uh, my name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Floriscent, Missouri, 63031, uh, Floriscent, Missouri, I already said that, Ward 4, okay. It says, "Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $25,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund to the City of Floriscent to the account 05-5-03-61480 Capital Additions for the purchase of buildings at 575 St. Charles Street." May I inform the mayor, city council, five, there's no buildings on 575 St. Charles Street? So, this isn't, this bill is, actually has to be changed in its reading, because the buildings that are in question are number 88 and number 70, Washington Street, Floriscent, Missouri, 63031. So, this is not right. It was, it was written wrong, it was presented wrong, and we can't cha, I couldn't change it before the council meeting tonight, so I'm asking right now that it be rewritten and voted on again, maybe at the next meeting, thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, you want to please state your name and the address?
Robert Smith, address is 2823 Chapelview Drive. Um, I did have, I have two questions. The first question is, why is it, if you're doing capital additions, you're using two separate accounts? And the second question is, what is the purchase, what are these purchases for?
Yes, sir, the one property is adjacent to an existing park across the street from St. Fer, St. Francis Street, and our, it'd be our intention to use that as a heritage property, we, it would be, in our view, it's important to us to keep the view of the historic shrine intact, and not have that be developed, obscure the view of the shrine from St. Charles and St. Francis Street.
Okay.
And the other property is not park-related at all.
Okay. Uh, the first question, the two different accounts, why do we have two different capital?
One of them, one of them is adjacent to a park, so it'd be an extension of an existing park, and the other one would be to, it'd be our intention to eliminate a, a, a building that's been a blight for about 20 years.
No, no, I'm, no, I'm talking about the account numbers, you're, are you, so you're studying two different accounts for two different properties, is that what you're doing?
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, that's all I needed, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, John Inglemeyer, 1281 Graham Road, I am back, I'm alive and I'm well. Tonight, on that bill, 9190, there's a lot of confusion between that and the prior bill, And at that time, it shows that the land is forty-six thousand three hundred dollars assessed. There's no improvement such as buildings on this site. So, I don't know what buildings we're acquiring on that site after being driven by it, looked at it, saw it. This does not make sense. The appropriation of the funds of thirty-five thousand and another twenty-five thousand for something that does not exist. We paid a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the land at the Weber Building, per acre. A hundred and ten thousand dollars per acre. We got a deal, and I understand that. But yet the other thing of it is, is that the appropriation is well over the twenty-five thousand, and now we have twenty-five thousand for a building that doesn't exist. There appears to be a lot of confusion, kind of misunderstanding, but my efforts here tonight will be worthless because apparently all of you have got your minds made up. It ought to be postponed and reviewed. The public, myself, Mr. O'Donnell, the other gentleman that spoke before me deserve an explanation. Detail, I've asked several years ago that prior to any legislation being passed, there should be a legislative intent. At this time, I don't see where the purpose is, other than the fact of acquiring one point, one point four-three acres at twenty-five thousand or thirty-five thousand, what number is correct, would be appropriate.
Mr. Hanky?
Yes. On Bill ninety-one ninety, the five-seventy-five St. Charles Street is obviously a typographical error in this bill. The correct numbers are eighty-eight and seventy, Washington Street. Now, how we correct that at this point, the intent for the property, but we need to just correct the addresses on it. This address just carried over from the previous bill. It's typographical error. No harm was intended by it, I'm sure. So, how do we, do we just, can we amend this bill with the proper addresses? I make a motion to amend this bill, striking the five-seventy-five St. Charles Street and substituting instead number eighty-eight and number seventy, Washington Street.
All those in favor? Aye. Mr. Lee?
Excuse me.
Hold on just a minute. I'm sorry. Mr. O'Donnell, give me just one minute.
Yeah, I mean, to be, if we were really to do this, I don't have a copy of the original bill in front of us. There's actually, there's actually another parcel that's on St. Charles Street that's part of the acquisition that we're acquiring, and I'm trying to real quick find that address. There's two structures, and then there's another strip of land that's on St. Charles Street across the creek that comes with that package.
Right.
Mr. Hessel, do you think we've shown enough intent with listing the two property addresses? Or should we make sure we include that?
Can I change my?
That strip of land that's on St. Charles?
Well, in a way, you can, you can, you want to be careful about if you can add all three, which is what I recommend.
Okay. Yep. Let me double-check the other legal description. I'll try and check it right now.
I know which strip of land you're talking about, but I have no idea what the address is.
Yeah, I'm on the website right here, trying to make sure I get the right one.
That is the strip just south on St. Charles Street of Washington, across the creek from the old shark property.
Yeah, I believe it's two-twelve.
That'd be closer.
Two-twelve?
Yes.
But I don't remember if it's both of the strips or just one strip, so, and I don't have that with me tonight.
Well, there's five hundred blocks.
Two-twelve, St. Charles. Clearly, the staff will understand what the council intended by this.
Two-twelve, was that in the?
Isn't that what you just said?
Well, it's either two-twelve or two-oh-two. I think it's two-twelve, but I don't have the purchase document with me either, so.
Nor do I.
Could we say plus the parcel of vacant land on St. Charles Street? I mean, if that wants, if we want to clear that up, so.
So, should I add this?
Package four is offered by the auction through the probate court?
Correct.
Should I amend my?
Yeah, you.
Yes, sir.
I would like to amend Bill ninety-one ninety, striking five-seventy-five St. Charles Street and adding instead, in this place, eight, number eighty-eight and number seventy, Washington Street, and two-twelve, St. Charles Street.
Why don't we say in the vacant strip of?
I'd say vacant strip. I'm not sure.
Which we consider to be the vacant strip of land across the creek from the old shark property.
All you have to identify is a vacant strip of land on St. Charles.
There's my amendment.
We'd have to identify that in the, in section one.
I'm pulling the actual bill in front of us.
Before you do that, can I get Mr. Egan his lights on? Mr. Egan?
Yeah, I was gonna do those amendments. And I was gonna attempt to clarify what happened, but Mr. Hanky did a very good job of clarifying. There's no ill intent. This is just a typographical error that we're trying to rapidly work on and fix on the fly legally.
Thank you. So, you're moving to amend?
Moving to amend the amendment.
And that is seconded by Mr. Lee?
You want to give me one second?
Sure.
The dead space.
Any kind of need for your purposes, you have to change it in the title, the first whereas clause, into section one.
Yeah, I, does anybody have the bill in front of them? Because the bill may be correct. It may just be on the title. I'm trying to find the bill.
Do you have the bill in front of you?
Just give me one second here, please. No, it's wrong in the bill too, so.
So, the motion's still on the floor?
No, Bill has it. Bill has it as five-seventy-five St. Charles in the whereas, and also down in section one has it as five-seventy-five, the original bill. All three of the title, along with the first whereas, as well as section one. Correct.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Egan?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that Mr. Hessel's comfortable with the way it's been amended and addressed.
I am.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Motion for a third reading on the amended bill? Right?
Yeah, thank you, John.
Ah, we got it.
Yeah, following that. An ordinance authorizing an appropriation of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Capital Improvement Fund of the City of Florissant to account zero-three-five-zero-three-six-one-four-eight-oh capital additions for the purpose of the buildings at five-seventy-five St. Charles.
I'm pulling the council?
Right.
Clerk, please poll the council.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldorff.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Syam. Lee. Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Bill number ninety-one ninety passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-two thirty. That was, that was the third reading. Oh, did we not do that? I apologize. We did that, and then we went for the. Right, so we did right?
Okay, well, there you go.
Say that again, Mr. Hessel. I didn't hear your citizen comments.
That were made as a result of those citizen comments, a motion to amend the bill. But there was already a motion for third reading on the floor, and there was a motion to amend following citizens' comments, and then there was a vote on the bill.
And there was amendment to the citizen's comment?
No, it was an amendment to the bill following the citizen comments. The way the process works, that's correct.
Following the citizen's comments.
That's correct.
And then it was amended.
That's correct. But the bill is still the same.
For the third reading with no public comment.
There was public comment. There was public comment. Mr. Engelmeyer, you and I can debate this, but I prefer, when you speak, I'll be silent. And when I speak, I would expect the same out of you.
Thank you, Mr. Hessel. Go ahead and proceed.
What I said again is that there was a motion on the floor. First off, there was a request for citizen comments prior to third reading. Following citizen comments, then there was a motion to amend the bill, which was then passed and approved, and then there was a vote on the amended bill. You do not need citizen comments following a motion to amend the bill, particularly when it is, with all due respect, it is more of a clerical error and clarification. So, the ordinance, the charter and ordinances require public comment prior to the passage of, prior to the third reading that occurred.
Mr. Shuldorff would like to say something.
I would just like to thank Mr. Lee for attending the auction and purchasing these properties. Two of them are in Ward five, and I would like to thank the administration for moving forward and the council for approving this at the time that go to the auction. I think it's gonna solve a lot of problems. Now, the city has a lot of options to do with those two pieces of property. And I think it was a win-win all the way around, and I want to thank everyone for that.
All right, thank you. Mr., the, this, what's, can? I did not see you stand up. I believe that was just explained through that whole process. I know there was explanation. There was explanation, so. I did. Bill number ninety-one ninety-one, Consulman Hanky moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Syam. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance amending chapter six hundred of the Florissant City Code by adding the definition of brewpub and associated licensing fees.
Consulman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Shuldorff. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance amending chapter six hundred of the Florissant City Code by adding the definition of brewpub and associated licensing fees.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldorff.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Syam. Lee. Jones. Egan.
Bill number ninety-one ninety-one passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-two thirty-one. Now, we'll move on to new business. First item of new business is board appointments. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I wish to reappoint Val Romey to the senior commission.
Consulman Caputa moves to approve the mayor's appointment, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment is made.
Thank you.
Resolution number nine ninety.
Resolution determining the intent of the City of Florissant, Missouri to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures.
Consulman Hanky moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Resolution determining the intent of the City of Florissant, Missouri to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures.
Consulman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Roll call, please.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldorff. Hanky. Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt. Syam. Lee. Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
A resolution determining the intent of the City of Florissant, Missouri to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
John Engelmeyer, twelve-eight-one Graham Road. Tonight on this resolution nine ninety, who is the person, a council member responsible to introduce this? As a council as a whole or an individual? First question. Second question is, very seldom do I ever speak out about issues concerning police or court. I have an issue tonight because last week, Ms. Pagano, you chaired a work session for the city council, at which point, according to sunshine law, the agenda was posted at city hall. It was not on the website or the internet to host us for any public comment or review. To my understanding is that the reimbursement indicates that there's a bond issue coming up, and it's gonna be appropriated out of the bond issue, a three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars a month payment for fifteen years. For seven court sessions a month, there was some cross-training or cross-use with other municipalities for the court building, but I did not see any operational costs. I did not see any issues concerning that. I have my comments, because I made them at that session. While attending that particular session, two citizens were present, myself, Mr. O'Donnell, at which we were not given a chance to comment, question, or even be concerned with this court building. The city council, as well as members of the staff, had every opportunity to interject their comments in, um, in review of the plans. Tonight, is this bill going to appropriate from the funds four-point-six million dollars on bond issues? And does that mean we're issuing or carrying on with the bond issue as we did last time? Where we extended the bond and we appropriated the money, for instance, the salt storage building that was never completed. I stood here and asked about the street contracts, if that money could be used for streets. It was not. It said that it was not available due to the kind of bond that it was. And that was several years ago. And tonight, I come before you in a futile effort to better understand what is taking place and maybe explain it to the public, our citizens, the use and application of four-point-six million dollars. As I indicated before, we bought the acreage of what called the Weber Building at a hundred and ten thousand dollars an acre, which I thought was exorbitantly expensive, and that was based on the information from the St. Louis County records and the real estate records. I took the ground divided by the number of acres per the summary from St. Louis County. Then, of course, we have the building. The building cost, the renovation of that, then also the landscaping and the closed confinement area for the staff members. There was a lot of questions that evening, but again, I don't know if the public is aware of what's going on. In a moment of time, we are doing this court building, why not be proud? Why are we hiding? And what's going on? Someone can answer, and I won't yield the floor. I ask for this to be continued so that I can ask further questions of your workshop, your committee, Ms. Pagano, concerning the court building.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer on behalf of the committee, which, there is a committee, but it.
Call another point of order. The bill, we have a resolution before us, and maybe there's some confusion. There's a resolution before us. It's not an appropriation. It's not buying bonds. It's not deciding what we're doing with that. It's simply, the matter before the council is a resolution stating our intent to reimburse ourselves for any costs that might become. So, I think the discussion is out of order, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask to move forward on the resolution.
Okay, I understand, and I was gonna get to that with Mr. Engelmeyer, but I wanted him to understand that the committee, which was Mr. Egan, myself, and Mr. Hanky, discussed this. and Mr. Hanky, discussed this and with a, and then I discussed with the mayor, thinking this project was entirely too large for a three-man committee. I wanted to bring the council in as a whole to ask questions and to look. As you know, we have three laborers in here that were tremendous help. Mr. Lee has contributed so much in the number, and everyone here has done something. That's why there is no committee per se. And again, I was going to say what Mr. Lee had said, was that this is just a resolution. It is to get the ball rolling, but I know the residents that I have spoken to about this who live close, and I am one of those people. That police presence there and this court thing is probably the best thing that's going to happen to Ward Seven and that area. So with that being said, I'm just going to move on to this because we're not really discussing that. And as Mr. Lee said, it is just a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, for your clarification.
Clerk? Please pull the council for a final vote. I'm sorry, lost track.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldorff.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Siam, Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Resolution number nine ninety passes. Bills for first reading. Bill number ninety-one eighty-three.
An ordinance to rezone for auto properties LLC, the property located at thirteen fifty North Highway sixty-seven from B three extensive commercial district to B five plain commercial district to allow for the construction of a new self-storage, self-storage truck and trailer rental facility.
Bill number ninety-one ninety-two.
An ordinance establishing the boundaries of the various wards of the city of Florissant.
Councilman Siam moves for his second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Discussion. Mr. Hanky?
Yes, I would like to offer amendment to E nine-one-nine-two. The map that was presented is, is, is exhibit A one or one A?
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A. And I would like to substitute the, the map that was provided from the committee on the revised February twenty-fourth map, let it be known as that. I would offer that amendment to substitute the existing map in the bill with, preferred instead, map called revised February twenty-fourth map.
Mr. Schmidt?
Uh, yeah, just on the amendment itself, just some clarification, without going into the whole spiel of, of the redistricting itself. We were presented last time at the public hearing with two different maps. Specifically, a March twenty-third map, which was the recommended map coming out of the redistricting committee. They also looked at a map which we determined and deemed as the February twenty-third map. And also the February twenty-third revised map, which is the one that's being amended, or being recommended now. Both maps came out of the redistricting committee. Actually, they were going to propose the February twenty-third map and instead went back and decided to provide us and the March twenty-third map, March twenty-fourth map. However, looking at the two maps, I've determined that my ward, Ward Eight, would be severely compromised in the March twenty-fourth map. My ward would, in essence, jump across New Hall's Ferry and take in parts of Paddock Estates. Which, no disrespect to the Paddock Estates people, I have, that's not the issue. The issue I have is the fact that I would be jumping across New Hall's Ferry and attaching, and just by the eyeball test, it doesn't look like a very contiguous jump in order to just to satisfy the minority majority, which the NAACP requested. It doesn't even meet that eye test, or that eye test either. So I will be endorsing, and I do submit that I would like the February twenty-third map. It moves the least amount of people. And secondly, we have to understand too, that we are now in twenty sixteen. We have a new census that's going to be done in twenty twenty. This will all be redone and again in another five years, in the year twenty-one twenty-one. After the census is done, we'll re-conform the redistricting committee and do this whole process again. The data that's being used for this redistricting committee at this present time was the twenty-ten census. So we are already five, six years of old data to redo this. So in my opinion, it makes no sense to move that many people, shift the wards around, especially my ward, around that much, and really not gain exactly what it was set out to do. So I will be endorsing, and I will voting, be voting for the February twenty-third map. Thank you.
Mr. Hanky?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I'm going to echo a couple of things that Mark, Councilman Schmidt said. One of the things, we looked at four maps were presented to us. Two of them from, from the eye test were, were not workable in any way. They didn't seem like they're workable at all. The two maps that were presented, one was called the alternate map, was, was in fact unanimously passed by the redistricting commission originally, before it was back, sent up and then reviewed and revised. The, that is the, the February twenty-fourth or twenty-third or twenty-fourth map, which was originally the unanimous decision of the redistricting commission to be sent up. They, they worked out, I spoke with the redistricting commission, and they looked at many, many different scenarios. The goal to be with a, with possibly a, a second minority majority or majority minority ward, which it, which it didn't work out that way. But they looked at many different actions, worked at many different maps to do this, many different configurations, okay? They have absolutely no problem, I spoke with Mr. Schmidt earlier, and they have no problem on supporting the alternate map, which was the, the one that I'm substituting, the February twenty-third or twenty-fourth map. I look at it this way, why I want to substitute this, this map? They looked at it every possible scenario, and to echo what Councilman Schmidt said, we're working on data that's from twenty-ten. We're working on data that is, at present, six-year-old data. So we're going to reconfigure our wards because some of the numbers were off, which was a, a honest mistake from the data given to us to St. Louis County. We worked off the numbers that were given to us. But nonetheless, we're working off of twenty-ten census data, already six years old. We're coming up on a twenty-twenty census when these will all have to be reviewed again. And whatever changes need to be made to the boundaries of our wards will be handled at that time after the twenty-twenty census. So I ask myself, which plan is the least disruptive out of all these plans? And that plan, obviously, is the February twenty-fourth revised map plan. That is the least disruptive to our wards, to our citizens that are in those wards, to the councilmen that they elected in those wards. It, it moves by far the least amount of people. So I ask myself, what was the most prudent, most prudent for our citizens? For our cost, for our council people? To me, the most prudent, take the least disruptive path, or the least disruptive map that corrects the issues that we had with the numbers, bearing in mind that we're going to be redoing this again in a few years, okay? So I thought it was most prudent for us to leave the most amount of people in the wards that they elected the councilmen for, knowing full well that we're going to do this again. I think it's most prudent and most cost-effective, and I, and I hope the council supports my substitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Mr. Schmidt, I understand what you're saying, and I, I appreciate your comments. I personally am going to be supporting the recommendation of the committee. I know, I read the minutes, I watched the meeting, I wasn't able to be here when the presentation was made. I do know that they looked at four maps, and the two of them were not, not good. I know that they had approved the February revised or the February map. But ultimately, their recommendation to us as a council was, was the map that is on the bill now. So I'm going to be supporting the, the March, the A, the A map as, has been presented in the bill. So that's all I have.
Okay, this is where I need you, Mr. Hassel. There is a motion on the floor for the amendment.
Correct.
Of, and we are calling March, the, the March A?
There's a March twenty-third.
Third would be?
Which is exhibit A.
Exhibit A.
That's attached to the ordinance, it's before the city council. There is now a motion to amend Bill ninety-one ninety-two, more specifically. Amend section one of Bill ninety-one ninety-two by substituting a different map, referred to as the, been called the February twenty-third, February twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Revised February map, and that would be referred to as exhibit A one.
And that was seconded by Mr. Egan?
That is correct.
Okay, so now.
Now, there's been discussion.
Right.
After all discussion, you have a vote on the amendment, which is the motion to amend is to substitute the February map for the March map. That's as simple as I can put it. That's on the floor.
Okay. I get you, I think.
So now all you need to say is all in favor?
All in favor of the amendment.
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, got that part.
Wait a minute, well. There's a roll call, isn't there?
And then roll call.
Why don't you do a roll call, because I can't tell what the vote is.
All right. Okay. I'm sorry, I thought we just had to do that.
Caputa.
No.
Uh, Shuldorff.
No.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
No.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Siam. Lee. Jones.
Yes.
And Egan.
Yes.
Four yeses and one, two, three.
Motion fails, we'll call for a second reading.
Resolution determining the intent of the city of Florissant, Missouri to reimburse for, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one, ninety-one ninety-two. Ordnance establishing the boundaries of the various wards of the city of Florissant.
Councilman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? A roll call, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Caputa.
No.
Shuldorff.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Siam.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Can he rescind?
Can he?
Listen, Mr. Caputa moves to reconsider his vote.
Are you reconsidering your vote?
Yes.
Just poll again?
So now what?
Just poll again?
Yes, as long as the record reflects that Mr. Caputa reconsidered his vote and voted yes.
Right. Finished, we're.
No, you still have to move.
Now we're on a third reading, we're, third reading for roll call.
Citizen comment, and then third reading. We have third reading.
Okay.
Read it for the third time, call for citizen comment, and then vote.
Okay.
All right.
An ordinance establishing the boundaries of the various wards of the city of Florissant.
There, before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this bill?
Robert Smith, two eight two three, Chapelview Drive. I'm confused, what's going on?
Well, I, Mr. Hassel, you want to explain this? Maybe you can explain what just went on?
Well, I think I'll answer the question by indicating that the recommendation from the redistricting commission was that the city council adopt a map dated March twenty-third, twenty-sixteen. That was attached to the bill. That is the map that is being considered by the city council this evening. There was a motion to amend the bill to substitute a map dated February twenty-sixteen as revised, and that failed.
So you're going with the March twenty-third?
That is correct.
Map.
Right.
And the reason you were trying to amend it, again?
Reason, trying to amend what?
To Councilman Hanky, you were trying to change it to the twenty-third? Or to February?
My, my reasons why I thought it should be amended, and it, and it did not pass. So I'm going to go for my whole spiel of the new bill. Councilwoman Twis is chosen not to endorse amendment.
Okay.
Clerk? Please pull the council for a final vote.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldorff.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Siam. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Bill number ninety-one ninety-two passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-two thirty-one. Bill number ninety-one ninety-three.
An ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Fit Kids Ministries, Inc., DBA Fit Kids Camp, to allow for the educational development center in a B three zoning district for the property located at twenty-three seventy North Highway sixty-seven.
Bill number ninety-one ninety-four. Oh, I'm sorry.
Bill number ninety-one ninety, that passed, what was that ordinance number? I'm sorry.
Eighty-two thirty.
Eighty-two thirty.
Eighty-two thirty.
Eighty-two thirty?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I'm missing one somewhere, sorry about that. And the sharks were twenty-nine?
Sharks was twenty-nine.
Eighty-two thirty, eighty-two thirty was on ninety-one ninety.
Ninety-one.
And eighty-two twenty-nine was ninety-one eighty-nine.
Twenty-nine was for?
Twenty-nine was ninety-one eighty-nine?
Thirty was?
Ninety-one ninety. And now what?
Thirty-one was the group hub.
Thirty-one.
Eighty-nine was twenty-nine?
Right.
Ninety-one eighty-nine was eighty-two twenty-nine.
Correct.
Ninety-one ninety was?
Eighty-two thirty.
So that would have made ninety-one ninety-one thirty-two thirty-one.
Right.
Eighty-two thirty-one.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Ninety-one ninety-two that we just passed, do you, do you read this? Thirty-two thirty-one again, then eighty-two thirty-two.
It's eighty-two thirty-two.
Eighty-two thirty-two, I'm sorry, yes, I just read wrong, thank you.
It's eighty-two thirty-two.
Okay, I think you had read that as.
And I, and the rates tonight, I may have. Uh, yes, okay, great. There must be, there's a blue scheme though, let's see. All right, let's move on to Bill, what are we on, Bill ninety-one ninety-three we just did?
I read for, for reading, uh-huh.
Bill ninety-one ninety-four.
An ordinance authorizing a supplement appropriation of sixty-seven thousand from the general revenue fund to budget account forty-fifty professional services for legal services as well as various other professional services.
Bill ninety-one ninety-five.
An ordinance authorizing appropriation of thirty thousand dollars from the general revenue fund to budget account four-nine-three-hundred-ten to cover operating costs for the police department.
Second, uh, seconded by Mr. Eagle, Egan, all in favor? Aye.
Did you want to talk, you want me to go on? Is this just for discussion?
Oh, you're in discuss?
Yeah, this is a, just basically an accounting procedure. It's taking money that was deposited into an insurance account and re-appropriating it back to the police department. So I'll be asking for three readings on that bill tonight.
You are asking for three, I'm sorry, am I hearing?
Yes, he's going to ask.
Okay.
Mr. Lee moves for a third reading, a second reading, I'm sorry. Seconded by Mr. Childreth, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
An ordinance authorizing appropriation of thirty thousand dollars from the general revenue account to budget account four-nine-three-hundred-ten to cover operating costs for the police department.
Mr. Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Egan.
And it would be deducted at 12 hours, a 12-hour rate, and not given additional days off, so to speak. So, he satisfied those, those questions of mine, and he indicates that he believes this would be a tremendous morale booster for the department. It would clearly give our officers the opportunity to be home with their families an extra 48 times a year, and that's why I'm supporting this, and I will be asking, or I am asking now for a third reading.
Mayor Schneider?
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Egan's explanation and his questions. I, when the chief came to me with this, we studied this for, for a number of months in, in, I, with an eye on trying to be more efficient and have a better morale. And I asked the chief to reach out to Mr. Egan because of, his profession is the same one, and I appreciate his analysis, his excellent questions, and I'd appreciate the council supporting this. Thank you.
Councilman Egan moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance amending the 2016 budget by reducing the number of Bureau of Field Operations Sergeant positions from seven to six and increasing the BFO lieutenant positions from four to five.
Councilman Egan moves for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance amending the 2016 budget by reducing the number of Bureau of Field Operations Sergeant positions from seven to six and increasing the BFO lieutenant positions from four to five.
Third.
Mr. Egan, I'm sort of going to back up a second, and would you like to explain this?
I, I will.
Bill? Thank you.
I will, and I'll be moving for three readings on this as well. A third reading here in just a moment. This, this expenditure is to, is requested the Police Department because the chief has, and his command staff have determined that they would like to have the Police Department go to 12-hour shift. I've been a cop for 31 years and I have absolutely no desire to work 12-hour shifts. That being said, there are a lot of people who really enjoy it, and there's some reasons why. I'll get to those in just a second. My questions to the chief, when I spoke with him, my initial question was, what was his opinion if it would affect the officer's safety or if there would be fatigue involved? And he has assured me that this is a, a project that his command staff and his supervisors are undertaking, and they are going to continually be abreast of the fatigue factor. It is becoming more and more commonplace in law enforcement to go to 12-hour shifts. As a matter of fact, the cities that surround us, City of Bridgeton, City of Hayeswood, City of Ferguson, are all currently on 12-hour shifts. The officers like it, and why the officers like it are for two reasons. Number one, with the shift pattern, you have every other weekend off. The second reason is, on the current eight-hour rotation, eight-and-a-half-hour rotation, depending which one you're on, you work approximately 18 shifts a month. On this plan, you work 14 shifts. So, basically, you get to spend a little more time with your family, a lot more time with your family if you figure it out to, over a year, that's 48 extra days that you're not here. The, my second question to the chief was, how will this impact overtime? Because I'm not quite sure that I would want to entertain this if come November, if there's no extraordinary events that happen in our community that they're coming and asking for overtime. And his study tells him that it could actually maintain or reduce overtime cost. And my third question for the chief was, I know that, how are they going to deduct holidays? If they were going, when a person, if you get 10 holidays a year, and if a person wanted a holiday, how would that be deducted? And it would be deducted at 12 hours, a 12-hour rate, and not given additional days off, so to speak. So, he satisfied those, those questions of mine, and he indicates that he believes this would be a tremendous morale booster for the department. It would clearly give our officers the opportunity to be home with their families an extra 48 times a year, and that's why I'm supporting this, and I will be asking, or I am asking now for a third reading.
Mayor Schneider?
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Egan's explanation and his questions. I, when the chief came to me with this, we, we studied this for, for a number of months in, in, I, with an eye on trying to be more efficient and have a better morale. And I asked the chief to reach out to Mr. Egan because of, his profession is the same one, and I appreciate his analysis, his excellent questions, and I'd appreciate the council supporting this. Thank you.
Councilman Egan moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment?
Three times, I'm sorry. An ordinance amending 2016 budget by reducing the number of Bureau of Field Operations Sergeant positions from seven to six and increasing the BFO lieutenant positions from four to five.
Okay, before the final vote, would anyone in attendance like to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the console for a final vote.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Bill number 9196 passes and becomes ordinance number 8234. Okay, we are now on to council announcements. Well, I have some good news to share. Guess what's coming up on June 22nd? It's a Wednesday evening, the Fourth Annual Meet and Greet Barbecue, and this year, wards 5, 7, 8, and 9 are welcoming Ward 6 to join us. The event will take place at Donegan Park in the event of rain, it, which we're hoping we can get through this year with no rain, will be held at the Civic Center ice rink. So, we're just praying no rain and hope everyone can be there at 6 o'clock, Donegan Park, June 22nd. Mr. Hanky?
Yes, first and foremost, I want to thank citizens and members of the council for going on the redistricting that we just went through this evening. Everybody's polite, civil, everybody's moving in the best interest of the city, and that's the way our system works. And I appreciate the deference you guys, the rest of you guys gave me this evening, and listening to my, my position on it, and I, I'm, this is how democracy works, and I appreciate the job that you guys did. Also, I want to thank everybody for the letter carriers food drive the past Saturday. They collected a ton of food for Team, our Team Food Pantry, and I want to thank all the letter carriers all across the whole United States, but particularly our guys here in Florissant, both the city and the rural letter carriers, for all the food they collected for the Team Food Pantry. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you. Real quick, I just, I sent an email earlier today to council and staff in the mayor's office, and I wanted to reiterate that email. My family and I had a baptism yesterday at Coke Park Pavilion Number 1, and the park was pristine, looked like a country club. Bob Laramie and his crew have done a fabulous job up there. The restrooms were clean, the playground was litter-free, the grounds were mowed, the pavilion was in great shape, and we had a very enjoyable Sunday afternoon with the Egan family in Coke Park. I highly recommend if you have an event during the summer that you, if they're not alre, already booked up, that you consider booking your event at one of our really beautiful parks. Thank you.
Mr. Tildrath?
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to thank Mrs. Gerling. She wasn't able to be here tonight because of a family conflict, but I was holding off my comments until tonight. I would like to thank her and her committee for their hard work. It was a very important issue, and they, they did a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'd like to thank the redistricting committee, all the time they took to sit down, give feedback on that. It's nice to have residents that will jump in and help our city like that. I'd also like to remind everybody that Team is at the end of the street. Please take time to donate something, you guys. I know Mr. Hanky put a big plug out there for us with the mail carriers, which I think that helped fill up down there, but we have to keep the momentum going. So, morning, noon, and night, there's always somebody hungry. Please do not forget about Team Pantry. Another thing I'd like to bring up over in Ward 2, off Cortez and Estes, MSD was supposed to close that down for four to six weeks on an MSD project. They're talking about not doing an open cut now, about doing a boring job. I did speak to the MSD inspector several days ago. As soon as I hear something, I will let those people in that vicinity know if that is going to be shut down. If it is going to be shut down, and they open the ditch up, it'll be four to six weeks before that will be done. The reason they are shutting it down, it's about a 25 to 30-foot V ditch that they would be opening there that wouldn't be safe to backfill every night, be very time-consuming. I want to thank the council for everything we went through tonight. It's definitely a pleasure to work with you guys when we have our differences and we get feedback off of each other. I definitely learn something new every night, guys. So, thanks.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I'm just going to add my thanks to Mrs. Gerling and the, and the redistricting committee. Mrs. Gerling chaired this committee after the 2010 census, and when we talked to her about stepping up and doing it again, she, she agreed to do that, and I know that committee had their hands full. I believe they had 90 days in order to act on it, and they took 88 of them, I believe, Mr. Hassel, or pretty close to it. I mean, they, they really did a lot of due diligence, they really looked at everything and, and put a lot into it, so I appreciate all their efforts. And, and I echo what Mr. Hanky said. I know we all came together in the end there, and we all have opinions on it, and I, I appreciate the spirited debate and appreciate working with all you guys as well. Thank you.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Ms. President. Yes, I had several, several calls over the past couple of weeks about barking dogs. So, if you have barking dogs in your house, you own a pet, make sure the dog's not out at night barking, and it keeps people up, and it is a nuisance. So, just be, just be courteous of the, of your neighbors with your barking dogs. And also, this month was Veterans Month, so make sure if you see a veteran, make sure you congratulate him and thank him for serving our country. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Pagano, yes, I'd like to bring something up, you guys. I'm sure the mayor's going to hit on this. I seen one of the flyers outside there on the way in today, about our Wednesday night outs are getting ready to start. Everybody that's ever participated by accident or has came up there on the invite, you guys,